Good.
Yips.
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay. It is 604. We'll call the City Council meeting at 4:00. Roll and roll call, please, Rose.
Mayor Borleo.
Present.
Vice Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Councilmember Tispania.
Present.
Councilmember Schirato.
Present.
Councilmember Longkada is absent. Staff is present.
Next, we do pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, report on a closed session. Direction was given.
Staff.
Item number four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Is there anybody that would like to amend it? Or staff, council, members of the audience? Okay. I would look for an approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign. Number five, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Anybody in the audience, public comment? Anybody online, Rose or? Okay. Rose, public comment. And move on to item number six, consent agenda. Is there any staff, public, or council member that wants to pull an item off of consent agenda? One, two, and three. I would look for a motion to approve consent agenda, item BDC.
I'll make the motion.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign. Number seven, A, regular agenda. Approve Resolution 22-67 approving the City of Angels' participation in the Clean California Adopt a Highway and Dump Day Program and authorize the city administrator to execute all necessary agreements.
So the Council of Governments is coordinating with Caltrans and the City of Angels. Caltrans has reached out to them to see if any of the agencies wanted to participate in the Adopt a Highway program as well as dumping. So I think it's a great opportunity for our residents to clean up stuff that's on their property as well as clean our roads with Highway 49 or north. So I will be, if council agrees to this, I will be coordinating with Gent Hashi within rate waste accounting to make sure that we have the same dates because it helps reduce confusion when outreach goes to the public if we're all using the same dates. We also need to identify if we want to do more of a voucher program versus having a, identifying a place for people to go and dump. So if we do the voucher program, then we would give vouchers to residents of the city and they could go and haul it and not have to pay for it. And then we get vouchers associated with those vouchers. We don't really have, I think, anywhere within the city that's large enough to have enough traffic and a place to dump mattresses and...
Keep going, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, you could pick them anywhere. I'm just thinking we would need, you know, you obviously need the large gyms and then you have to have the ability to have traffic flow. And these are for very bulky items. So like mattresses.
Tires. Yeah, couches.
Yeah. No hazardous waste of any kind, but this could include refrigerators, any kinds of appliances or furniture, couches, chairs, helpful trash, sewers, which would be computer television monitors, all of that. No hazardous waste of any kind. So it's...
No paint.
No paint.
They're doing a separate time.
Right.
They have a separate time. High school.
That high school was worth the turkey month there? Um, possibly. So we'll just have to think about somewhere that's large enough.
About the UWPA, the park lot across. I don't care how big it is, though.
I think it would be hard.
Turn around.
Yeah, and then there's the little courtyard.
I think that's...
Cow waste has its own yard.
Yeah. So we might go out and just kind of look to see what would work. I'll work with public works to see what might work that would allow some again for traffic. But if we can't really find anywhere that's suitable, then we'll only just... And so...
So the voucher, that somebody could take the voucher then out to the dump?
Yes.
Okay, and dump for free?
Yeah.
And it expires? Is it over just that weekend or that day? Or does it have an expiration date?
It would have that.
That would be a little more flexible, maybe, to schedule it.
So we'll try to work through what's going to work best. I'll coordinate with the City of Angels to make sure we can coordinate dates on that. And so the nice part is it gives kind of an inexpensive way for the city to clean up and the residents to clean up their properties. So I think it's kind of a win-win for residents and city altogether.
Would we try to coordinate any like highway cleanup or cleanup plan? We did the Balacito Road. We did down the highways. That one, we had teams.
Last fall, I think it was.
And I mean, the amount of appliances and large, like tires and weird stuff came up like out of this creek was phenomenal. Exercise equipment was weird. I mean, you know, it's amazing. It was terrible. Yeah, it was terrible. Okay, that'd be great. If we could coordinate that, then we could put together a big working.
Yep.
Awesome.
Yeah.
As long as it's all gone, you know, by the morning. Can we do a combination of location and voucher?
I have to check with the program guidelines. But we'll coordinate with Caltrans and rate waste accounting to determine if it works best for our residents. Perfect. So in order to do this, basically, they just want proof that you guys are on board with us. And so I would need you to approve the resolution and then give me authority to execute all necessary agreements. And then we'll look for it.
Which is in the resolution, right? We have to look at it. You guys got any questions? Staff questions? Public comment? I think this is a great idea. So I would make the motion to adopt Resolution 22-67.
I'll ask the second.
Careful, choose first.
Don't talk trash.
Exactly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Item B, discussion and direction to approve Resolution 22-68, Customer Assistance Program Policy and Resolution 22-69, Budget Adjustment.
So this was a program that was developed within our study that was done in 2010, but it was never implemented. And when we were going through the budget process, there had been a direction at that time from council to bring that back for discussion and potentially adoption. So that's really what this is. So the customer assistance program, you can't use rate revenue. You have to use discretionary revenue. So general, the order sales tax, KOT, harbor tax, any sort of discretionary revenue that's non-rate to subsidize this. This would be tied to low-income households. The low income, there's a whole process of determining if they're low-income. It would be an annual renewal process because if they're low in condition, they might not be low-income next year. And it's really to target the customers that we have within the city that are at that very low level poverty-based. In the rate study, it was interesting because it was talking about a very, very low contribution amount, a water sewer credit of $2.68 per month for a total of $5.36 per month. That's not going to do anything for residents of this demographic. So what we did at CCWD and what I've seen in other jurisdictions is it's more of a $20 per month for water or $25 a month for sewer, mainly because sewer is more expensive than water. And if you had full services, you would get $40,000 per month. And we currently have, you know, 1,556 residential water customers. This would only apply to residential. 1,516 residential sewer customers. And so if we funded it at what the recommendation is, 40,000 total, 20 for water and 20 for sewer, it would be available to 5% of our water customers and 4% of our sewer customers. Based on the city population and based on the economic information that's available from the last census, the city's population that's below the poverty line is 7.8%. So right now, we're offering nothing. So I will tell you, programs like this, you can fund it as much as you want and it's never going to be enough. So how you generally handle that is you have a fixed number of slots that people can apply for. And once they're all filled up, then there's more slots. So anyone else would go on a waiting list because people can drop off through the year. Things that would cause someone to drop off is if they, you know, go delinquent, live ill, you know, they, you know, whatever. But, or they no longer are becoming qualified. So there's various things that would cause someone to be removed from the program. So if we wanted to meet the levels of that 7.8%, we would have to contribute just over 29,000 for water and just over 35,000 for sewer for a total combination funding of just under 65,000, which is obviously higher than my initial recommendation of 40. And 40 is greater than 0, which is what we're doing right now. So right now, I mean, we can take the water and sewer late fee revenue and apply that towards this program, which is roughly about 60,000. And those funds can be used for that. And then we would have to come up with another 24,000 from the general fund. As I said earlier, it's got to come from discretionary funding. And...
So that's only the 40, though?
To get to the 40.
The 16 and the 24 is the 40.
That's just for...
Not the 64, just under 65 that you have on the top.
Yeah.
Sorry.
How many, do you want to cap that at whatever that 64 is with the 7.4? Do you want to cap it so no more people can qualify? I even assign a number to it, is what I'm trying to say.
You take the, so we're going to provide $20,000 for water and $20,000 for sewer. You just take 20,000 divided by 12, period, 20.
And then that's it. Those people can get in and otherwise...
So you get 83 water customers and you get 66 sewer customers. At a funding level of 40,000.
So if somebody drops off, like say month two, can we move someone up on the list? We'll have them with, like, when we list.
We'll have them on the list.
And the people that are already in, do they have to requalify every year?
Every year. Okay, so what kind of stack is this going to do at a time?
Do you want to finish up?
Yeah. Okay, so there had also been a, we, when the conversation came up before, there had also been a conversation from some of the public that, you know, the city should allow people to donate. And yeah, so that's not really a bad idea as well. So also, if the council wanted to allow public to benefit specifically to this program, any donations that came in for that would also work both towards funding this. And then depending on donation levels, it could reduce the impact of the general fund or it could expand the program. And then we would just update council as part of future reports on current status and how it's going. There is an administrative burden on staff, if I'm not wrong, because every, you know, every, so generally what happens is you open it up for, the first time you do it, it's forced.
Right.
Because you open it up to everybody and you get a flurry of people that want to apply for it. And then you have to go through all the documents that are submitted to weed out who doesn't qualify or who doesn't have the appropriate documentation. And then you've got your list of who does. And then you pretty much just have to go from first in, first funded. And then you build your list off of that. The second year is a little bit easier because you already got your current list. So you do the outreach to that group. And then if you, and then you theoretically were in a waitlist. So you've already got people to go into the empty spots. So anyone who doesn't qualify that second year, learning year, or whatever it is, you've already got a waitlist. And then we'll always have people that call because they're going to see it on our website that we have a customer assistance program. And they'll ask, and then we can lead an awkward, a dour waitlist if the slot comes open. Is this something that we have to do in the city? Personally, we don't have to do it. It is something that is asked every time we do reporting to the State Water Board. So I will say, historically, when those questions start finding their way on the surface, it is an inkling that it's coming. Maybe they will just target larger water municipalities. Maybe the smaller ones like that won't have to comply with that because we're a small community water agency. But it also is a question that does come up when we apply for grant funding as well. So it is a, it's a good mark to the city when you're applying for some of these grants.
This was one of the questions on Citygate, wasn't it?
Yes, one of the questions on Citygate.
Should we wait and see what that comes back? Like what level of the traffic?
Yeah, we can wait, but I just, I know council had asked me to bring it forward. So I was ready to go.
This was something we tabled a while back, if I remember right.
Yeah. And, you know, really, it's developed in terms of what it needs to be. And then the policy is developed. So it's ready to go whenever council is ready to go.
How would you do outreach for finding donors or sponsors? Or what, you've already had some show interest, maybe?
Well, we had a lot of people that are women-run. And so we have worked very closely with all of them to try to push them to APCA for additional utility assistance. The utility assistance that we offered them through the state relief program was not being qualified. Everybody did it, didn't matter how much money they made. Once all that money was gone, then we're left with the accounts that are struggling to make a dent in it. We pushed them to APCA because APCA is running the LEWAC, which is the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. And they can provide up to $2,000 in funding for local bills. So we've had a lot of customers that have qualified through APCA. So a great outreach effort is to coordinate with agencies like APCA and also the Resource Connection because they already know, and also social services on the county. They already have clientele that are probably already giving aid as it is. So some of the income documentation qualifiers is a letter from the Resource Connection or it's proof of, you know, some sort of low-income program including PGD CARE Act.
I said CARE. I think I remember CARE.
Yeah. So PGD CAREs.
We didn't have to do the research. We just had, they just had to provide us that bill. And somewhere on there, it says they're on that. So that's kind of rubber stamp.
That rubber stamp. For some reason, they don't have that because maybe the PGD bill's not in their name. But they're qualifying the assistance through the Resource Connection. If you can get something from them.
So back to your question. When I remember, there wasn't a gobs of staff time. They just had to commit and present the bill with CAREs or that they were already getting assistance from the resource.
Right, well, my next question is, is this just an additional assistance program? I mean, it just seems like every time you turn around, there's another program that, and I don't mean to be sounding not compassionate, but I mean, where, I mean, it's just a constant handout.
There has historically never been an assistance program for water and sewer services. There's been assistance programs for PGDs and for cell phone. That's it. And so there is funding for those utilities. There's never been funding for water and wastewater. So what came out from COVID and some of these people being behind their rent, being behind their mortgage, being behind their utility payments, it was pretty massive. So we're a small agency and we had something like, it was 100. I think we got it down. Yeah, but that's a lot. And so we, you know, we applied for the program for water and wastewater which is limited. And then the state and the federal government went through this LEWAC program. But once that money's gone, it's gone, and it's limited to $2,000 one time, that's it. So if someone is working with APCA and they had a $2,000 bill, that's it. Going forward, there's no more help for that. If someone only had like a $500 bill, I think they could still continue with APCA to subsidize some additional bills going forward. But once you hit the $2,000 cap, that's it. Once that's done, there are no more programs that I'm aware of for low-income, none. So then it just goes back to the respective agencies to either come with a customer assistance program or...
I have a question. I have two questions. One is, how many, do you know how many cities in the state of California do not offer assistance in water and wastewater? Are we one of the few?
Most.
You?
Right.
My second question, maybe I have a third question. But my second question is, so we have a lot of fixed income senior folks in town that their money doesn't change and everything goes up. And so they have to make it work. And so I can see how this would be a benefit, especially if they're already on the CAREs program. But some of them are renters. And so then I don't know how that would...
It would be fine. So what would happen is, and it's in the policies and we're in here. So if you were a renter, you would need to get approval. So if you're a tenant, a copy of the current rental agreement. And then we would want, because at that point, the PGD bill might not be in their name, I don't know. And then Resource Connection can get information back to us. And then we would also make sure...
Those tenants will have, I think, their names.
Right.
That's why I was asking, because then now, since the rent goes up because of this.
And then we would want the, and then we would want the owner of the property to approve their own program. So everybody would be on the...
That's my biggest, that's where, that's my biggest thing is that we do have a pretty, you know, decent amount of people who are on fixed income. And this would definitely help in the fact that, you know, 22 years I've lived here, we haven't seen any programs that help.
The other thing is, can you look into the PGD CAREs program and make sure that they have to re-apply every year?
They do. They do.
And then do most, do most renters pay their water and sewer?
Well, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, because, no, well, but I mean, just historically anyhow, it's not broke down. It's just your rent is $1,200 a month and that covers water, sewer, garbage, the facility, whatever. So I just...
Here, most renters are being required to pay their own water and sewer. And so the landlords are approving that to be on, to get the bill. We don't recommend that, but that's what, and actually, I would say that's the bigger administrative burden on staff than this would be because renters are changing all the time.
So would this, would this affect people like in Big Horn? And, I mean, are they all individual water, they're metered, right?
They're metered.
So how, how does that work? Because I would think that they would be a good group that Carolyn's talking about. But if they're metered, then that's not directly...
I think they have a six-inch and then they...
Yeah, I think they have a six-inch and then they allocate it out.
And then that's just part of their rent.
So it is individual?
No. I think Big Horn pays that six-inch hook up.
I think it's included in their rent.
And it's included in the rent.
So they wouldn't be a recipient of it.
They wouldn't be qualified.
And that's a large chunk of the rent.
There's all the block outside of that, too.
You got any council questions at the moment? Staff questions? I'll open it up to you. Public comment? Step on up to the mic.
It's far and...
You gotta come on up.
You can hear me?
She did it last time. Please say your name.
My voice is loud enough, isn't it? I don't have to say my name.
Yes, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Lori Reese. I live in Angels, CA. I'm on a fixed income, but yet I'm able to pay for my water bill. As far as your question with renters, a lot of renters do not pay. I mean, I don't know what the ratio is or what, you know, what the percentage is. But I do know a lot of renters do have to pay their own water, own electricity, own sewer, all that. But, you know, there could be more. It could be 50/50. I don't know. I just know that they do. And as far as Green Barn, I lived there years ago. The water and sewer was included in the rent. And so if it goes up, your rent goes up.
Oh, Big Horn?
I mean, Big Horn, I'm sorry. Yeah, Big Horn, yeah. So that's what, all I wanted to say was, you know, there is, I don't know what the ratio is. I mean, what the percentage is of the rent, the people that are renting that have to pay for the water. That's all I wanted to contribute, to say to that. So I don't know if there's some way you can find out. You know, I don't know if that's intrusive. Landlords, you know, to find out? I don't know.
It's a lottery.
There's a lot of information that still needs to be looked into, I guess, is what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Lori.
So this, this cost that we have broke down, this is going to include staff time or that's going to be...
Any other public comment? No? Online public comment? I have a close public comment. I'm writing tax. You're fine. We're not just keeping this moving forward.
I just kind of want to look at the numbers.
No, this is, this is just, this is just...
The donation part.
The donation part.
So staff time is going to be on top of that.
It would be on top of that. Okay. We just need to know what we're spending.
So for the landlord situation and they charge a flat fee for rent, the water is included in the rent. That landlord could bring the rental agreement and the tenants. We don't even want to mess with that. That's muddy, muddy, muddy.
Muddy.
So that's touching on what Lori was just speaking to.
All right, I'll go.
Just a reminder, there's two resolutions on this item.
Right, there's the budget adjustment.
68 and 69.
Right. I am all for trying to help everybody out. And $20 a month would be a nice little add-on to a water and 25 would be great for sewer to the people that would qualify, to the residents that would qualify for it. But you're saying there's about $20,000 a year in late fees. So that would bring us down to roughly $44,440. We have to come up with some.
Well, if you did the 40,000.
That'll be 20.
64.
Right.
Then it would be 16,000 in late fees. And so that would be 24, I mean, from the general fund.
What do we do with the late fees? I mean, I know we haven't gotten them for two years, but what do we normally...
They go to the water fund for operations.
For operations or...
We spoke to that money before, though. We really spoke to it when we weren't getting it. We were like, man, those late fees used to pay for that and things like that. So we're going to miss that.
It's, it's also a, it's water coverage.
I just, I just wonder if we're going to get 83 water and 66 sewer. Is it, is it accomplishable to get?
I think you'll, I think you'll, I think you'll pull $40,000 out of here in a heartbeat.
With, with how many people we had delinquent that we had to, to pay the plans that we had to set to ATCAD?
Yeah, I just know that when we hand out the food vouchers at Christmas and Thanksgiving for the veterans, they all have to live here and a lot of them are, they were all complaining, like they were all saying it's really hard for them. They're all fixed income.
Well, they are.
And everything's coming up and their. And everything's coming up and their income is not, and, and they're getting that food vouchers too. So I just, I know that it's a hard thing to balance because we don't want people who are going to take advantage.
That's my thought.
Exactly, or go get that second job. These are folks that cannot do that.
Yep.
That's the problem.
I wish there would be a way.
I wish there was a way that I could say, can we serve our veterans, you know, like, or something like that, but.
Or our elderly. That could be capped at an age, right? So you're not 22, not getting a job.
You can't discriminate like that. All you're getting is seven, you're going to, you're going to serve this, you're in the wrong business. You're going to serve a 7.8% that's below the poverty line is what you're going to, you're going to hit.
Right.
With the.
Whether the election can be that way or.
Right, with the $20,000.
It pains us a bit in some areas, yes.
Yeah, for rough number, we're getting $20,000 a year off of the late fees and it'll cost us another 20 to help service.
What if administration costs?
Once it's set up, I don't think it'll be a big deal.
No, it's not like I'm going to pay people overtime to do that. So, so, you know, a lot of what I'm doing since I've gotten here is just stream length things. Questioning, why are we needing five copies of this? What is this for? You know, there's, there's things.
If we start making these packets, how much do we save?
Or if you start pushing people to pay for this bill, can we do that? Can you do that? Can you add into here, if you hop on this program, you go to paperless billing? I'm just, I'm just thinking of ideas.
Oh, no, so that, so that's part of like some of the outreach to try to emphasize, you know, electronic billing and all of these things. Those start taking burden and costs off of staff and off the city as well.
A piece of paper, the mailing out, the time.
That envelope.
So I don't know.
Is this something we have to continue to do? I mean, what if the time is changed?
So every year we would have to redo it.
Every, every year. Because, you know, I mean, sometimes you get into these programs and now it's, we don't have the money to do it. So now what do you do?
They do that guy.
So, you'll be that person, but you'll hear them on the podium, but if we don't have the budget to do it, that's all.
So how will you start this rollout? Will it be a note on the bill saying?
We would, we would work with the Resource Connection, with Social Services and we have.
And the veterans office?
And the veterans. We already have the, we already have who it is. So I don't want to put it on the bills because I don't, I don't want to get flooded with every, this has been part of the issue as well is we have lots of people who are like, oh, I, I have a working bill, I want to pay the plan. Technically, they don't meet the income requirements with payment plan, but we're being nice because everything just came up COVID and we're trying to work through this year. And we have lots of people that we have reached out to ATCAD and they don't qualify. So I don't want to get inundated with people that don't qualify. So instead focusing that target where we know that they're drawn for 40 days and then we'll be in.
But if they're not already receiving some sort of subsidy or some sort of assistance, they won't hit your mark, right?
They won't.
So.
When would we roll this out?
Yeah, whenever you want to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll do it, I'll make a motion to approve, so, let me make, make a point. So we're after $40,000, correct? Correct, we got the 64, 440, because that was another thing. We're after the $40,000, 20 for water, 20 for sewer, divide it up between, so we're a total of 40 and we have 16 already in the, in the, in the delinquent accounts. So we're $24,000, we have to do a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2268 and 2269. No, exactly.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same side? I think that was a 4-0.
Okay, we'll get it going.
Did you, did you bet?
I did, though.
You abstained, all right, so did you abstain? Okay, so we have a three. Three, zero, one upset, one abstained. Right?
And then you can let me know who responds on that for those lines.
That would be me.
Oh, that's good.
No, or you can reach out to Tony, I think he has your number.
He does have it, correct.
Your tire all in? Okay. No, that's correct, so. We are on now item 7C. Approve engagement letter for Larry Bane, CPA and approved staff and advertised for audit services for five years beginning with the 2223 fiscal year.
Okay, so.
Oh, you don't, your name on there, I'm actually just.
Go for it, go for it. I'm just talking, go for it.
We thought this together. Perfect. So we, there's two parts to this. The first part is Larry Bane, he'll be out next week to start our audit. He's been on several audits in the past for the city. This year, the audit will have an additional component that we have to have a single audit because we've had over 750,000 federal expenditures per dollars, mainly Orpheus Gray growth project is one of the largest. So we will need to have that additional component which adds to the cost. So the difference from previous years went up about five thousand dollars. The second piece to that is that both for that and I discussing about how, we don't know how long Larry's been here for a long time. It would be good to do an RFP, go out and do it good for five years, working contract with a CPA. Could be Larry, but we're showing the effort that we went out, we tried to find somebody else. The other option is if Larry had more staff, he could rotate that staff, but it's just currently Larry. So I think he has one additional staff person. So that's the second part is we would like to, in January, once all of the audit services are done, Larry said he'll finish up in December and give us a report, then we will send out an RFP and begin looking for audit services for the next fiscal year.
For the next five years.
Yeah, yeah, it would be, that's really where it's more applicable for a CPA because they invest more time in the first year getting to know you and they kind of make it up in the next fiscal year.
Questions? Counsel? Staff? Public comment? In the house? Public comment, online? Everybody in the house? Okay, closing public comment then, and. All right, so we're, we're going with Larry this, this year and then we're going to send out an RFP for five years after that.
You need a motion for a new motion?
And a RFP?
I'll make the motion to approve the engagement letter and the RFP for five years.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed, same side? Out of the discussion and approval of Resolution 2270, approving Angels Creek Trail and Main Street Historic Bike and Pedestrian Improvement Projects to the Calabres Council of Governments for the 2223 RSTP and CMAC Call for Projects.
Okay, so CMAC released their call for projects specifically for the RSTP funds and the CMAC funds. So RSTP is. Yeah, there you go. Something, something. And then CMAC is congestion mitigation, air quality.
Well, yeah.
Anyway, they are both pots of funds that we can use specifically for projects. So we basically compete with the county. So the county submits their call for projects, we submit our call for projects. Council of Governments puts together a review panel and looks at our, both of our submissions and identifies which projects they want to put forward. And there's also, you know, they might, like, part of our project and part of the county's project and they might say, you know, well, we can fund this component of your project and then, you know, wait till the next call for projects comes out for some other funding source and then you might, you know, want to submit this second piece of your project for that. So it's kind of a quiet and dark. So we, you know, what makes the, the projects competitive is if they, if we have a plan already, if there's already been public support, if there's already been council support, if it kind of like checks all the boxes, it's good for pedestrians, it's good for bicycles, it's good for traffic control. Does it build economic, you know, you know, access and, and all of those great things. So, so Darren Versatorre and I, or Aunt Amy Augustine, we're kind of going through all the documents that are out there to try to identify what is a project that we could work with. So the, so what we looked at is, okay, we've got, Caltrans is already doing their shop project which is wanting to take the sidewalks along Utica Park. We're trying to see if we'll go down further where, on the other side of Napa, where we have purchased that property. And I think that's where they're going to end. We've got the Utica Expansion Project going on, we've got Angels Creek Trail Project going on. All of those are working around the downtown area. So it makes sense for us to identify a project in that downtown area that kind of helps start pulling those pieces together. We are going to be sending out an RFP for sidewalk repairs. We're going to be doing all the tree trimming and getting on top of that. We're working through what we need to do for downtown at this point. And we've got a lot of projects that are all kind of coming together specifically around downtown. The Raspberry Hard Scrabble Project is the one that needs the most expense, which it was. So we get complaints of traffic driving too fast downtown. So these bump outs force cars to slow down because you're getting squeezed in a little bit. It is better for pedestrian safety because it shortens the length that a pedestrian has to walk across the street. It unifies the area because you're putting in some aesthetic components into the project. We have a, on the hard scrabble side, we have a fire hydrant that gets hit on a regular basis. So this would move that on the, that's on the raspberry side, sorry. On the hard scrabble side, we have some major drainage issues. So this would help facilitate fixing some of the drainage issues that are over there. So that's, that is the project. We're asking for that in addition to completing additional construction funding for the Angels Creek Trail. It, that Angels Creek Trail aligns really well with CMAC funding because CMAC funding is specific for transit projects or bike and pedestrian projects. And so we got a significant funding for CMAC for planning and engineering. It's going through, it's almost done with cultural, next will be environmental. We think that the environmental document will be out in the spring or, actually, no, I'm just thinking November and summer of this year. So, and then we'll go into it right away. So really, we're in a good position with the funding that we've already identified for the Angels Creek Trail to continue that request for additional construction funding because we know we don't have that construction funding for the project as it is. And then the Raspberry Hard Scrabble, a lot of that is going to be on the engineering side. However, we will talk to the Council of Governments. It's currently listed on the call for projects as federal RSTP. By COG, generally we'll swap the federal RSTP for state RSTP. And if, if it goes that way and we can tie all of the engineering to state RSTP and eliminate some of the federal requirements that we would have to deal with, which is going to make that engineering piece a little less. But in order to submit this to Council of Governments, we need you to approve the resolution and need to have you sign the support letter for the call for projects.
Questions?
I like it too. I know. I can't wait to start it right now. I was so excited.
Staff questions? Public comment?
Lori Nigro, on this sidewalk project or the projects of many sidewalks that we were talking about, has anybody ever thought about first? I've only been fighting this one over 40 years, so I thought I'd throw my hat in and ring you in on it. The sidewalk is going out to the annex. I would love to walk out to visit my daughter, my mother's house and not worry about getting killed.
Yes.
I used to walk to school and path every day, it was safe, but they had, by guys' house, they hadn't fenced it off. Like they have it now. So you could walk back away from the, the traffic and then go down, you know, once you got past your party's place. And my grandson Emmett, he walks home from school every so often, he has to cross and then he goes up by little Mrs. Gradjo's house on the Hill Snore Street there and then he's got to cross to give over him, as fear as they have got him. I mean, if you guys just kind of keep it in mind, like I said, it's been 40 years.
Yes, it's terrible.
I just keep hoping.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is to try to strategically get through the whole downtown plan. And there is discussion in this plan that goes down, it goes down 49 to a degree. So that is something that we definitely want to consider. But we're trying to also be careful to not interfere with Caltrans projects because if Caltrans will be for it, I would much rather them do it than us have to do it. So that's why, you know, we want to stay away from projects that are going to interfere with the, the shop projects that are going with Caltrans right now. We don't want to interfere with any of that. So we kind of have looked at possibly down further those sidewalks, but then we have the Angels Creek Trail, that Angels Creek Trail is going to go across that intersection right there and we don't know exactly how that is going to intersect or where it's going to cross over or. So I don't want to interfere with that environmental piece as well. So we tried to stay away from existing projects that are already underway so we don't derail part of the planning process that we already have in. So I think once the Angels Creek, that first phase of Angels Creek is done, which we should be going into construction on that way in 2455, then we can start looking at sidewalks going down, coming down. But yeah, totally.
I see a lot of kids walking down that way too. I was always like.
Well, I, you know, I've always, I've kind of said that you hear from me loud and clear if one of my grandkids does get killed. I mean, I probably don't remember. I mean, that's, that's numerous times, it's just that bad.
Yeah, no, it's definitely playing from her.
And it's always been shifted between Angels and Caltrans. I mean, this is insane, for, for 40, for 40 years.
Any other public comment? Online? Okay, closing public comment. So I would look for a motion to approve Resolution 2270, if there's one.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
No, go ahead.
Second by Gretel, all in favor, say aye. 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 Same side, anybody else?
I didn't see that a ton of signature letter in there, but we'll have to get it tomorrow.
Administrative report?
So serving results.
Um, so survey results, as of the end of last week, we had had nineteen employees respond, one hundred and sixty-seven public. It sounds like a really low number.
No, it's great.
But you have to think, we have almost thirty-nine residents, but some of those are children. So, you have to like divide the total thirty-nine hundred by the average household takeoff for children. So, it ends up being about ten percent, I would say, of the residents, which is actually very low. Michelle and Rose went down to the last farmer's market. They had a gift basket down there, trying to entice people to do the survey. We created, little, Michelle is creating these little handouts. We had a QR code on them. I also attended the candidates' night. They had a table out front and handed out the QR codes and harassed anybody going to take in the survey. But I'm sure they took the survey by now. And so, we're trying to get as many people as we possibly can to do it. So, we've done quite, quite a bit of outreach on that. And then Public Works is gonna be doing some leak detection training. They're gonna start doing that tomorrow. We're following the, we've also invited the UTE if they're interested. We have a leaky system. So, we would like to identify where the leakiest parts are and then start including those in the capital, like in the I-N-I project. When we do that, it helps the efficiency of our wastewater plant. And so, we really wanna make sure that we, we control the I-N-I from a leaky system from getting into the wastewater plant. You don't want to treat stormwater, freshwater. So, that's what that is for. We will potentially have to start doing some outreach if we start getting that leak undergoing because in order to do leak detection, you smoke it. So, I think our system's smoking enough or like leaky enough, you might think this is town fire emergency. So, we'll, yeah.
Make sure the boys at the firehouse know that.
Yeah, we'll do some outreach on that. But they are doing that, that training. And then I'm working with COG and planning to get the regional staffs on a, we've had a couple snacks, so we're just trying to work together to kind of get through those. And then on the shop logo update, I am working with HDL and ACAB just in terms of, you know, kind of outreach, utilizing their newsletter and their email for the current business. So, I'm going through all the, I'm getting the business, active business licenses that we have and pulling out the ones that definitely don't apply, they don't qualify at all for the program. So, HDL can start working through that. We are gonna call it the Hop in Shop.
Okay.
Super cute. And, and so, HDL, HDL's created like the, what the look of the car will be. And so, with that little frog and Hop in Shop. So, we, once we get through that, get some of the marketing materials developed, which is gonna include some, you know, posters and like the little door sticky things that, you know, they're not stickers, but they're...
Deco.
Yeah.
They're just like... Whatever those are called. So, we'll start giving those out to businesses. Once we enroll between five and ten businesses, we'll go ahead and like go live because we wanna have enough businesses enrolled that we'll actually see.
Yeah.
The idea is to start with a $25,000 allotment and see how that goes and then do another one. So, space out, so we don't have like a run in, in and of room. And then I also talked to them and we have the ability, because we had talked about doing, you know, if you buy one, then you have to pay, I think, five dollars? Five dollars for a car, the ten percent, one dollar for the car? One dollar for the car, five percent, I don't know, whatever. The city can actually absorb that as part of the car funding. So, it might just make it easier if you still absorb the whole thing and that would just come off the fifty, the... And so, that is going well and... Oh, we are in the process of switching over our bank, so...
Question?
And we, finally, did we do a check run with the...
We're going to this week.
Yeah, so this week officially, you don't have to come in and sign check anymore.
Actually, Chris, the entire check we bought, like, check stock.
Oh, really?
For the most, and it'll correct the entire check.
Wow. Yeah, so that helps with security.
They print it out.
Yeah.
Can't lose another one.
Right.
Okay. Counsel reports, I'll start with Gretel.
Well... Please hold, sorry.
I'm not ready to do anything for this.
Kendra?
Sorry. Hey. I attended Friends of Fair on the 21st, a lot of things happening in preparation for the fair already, the Derby, the RFP for the Derby concession has come.
The audio and the concession.
And the audio, the other thing. So, a lot of things happening in the, in the background. I was at the Historic Society down in Coproplis. There was this great guest speaker.
He was horrible.
His name was Alvin.
Yeah.
It was, it was awesome. It really was great. It was in Coproplis at the Armory. I'd, I'd never been to one before, so... I attended, so let's see, we're right here. Historical dinners are awesome. Yeah, yeah, but it's always great, great visiting night. Yeah, and your mother-in-law was a speaker too. She had all the background for Coproplis. UWPA on the 27th, Alvin and I attended that. We were approved, a concept approval for the Sierra Nevada Conservancy grant. It's a hundred percent grant that will help with a 222 acre fuel reduction. So, we definitely are in the process of that. We voted on sponsoring an event coming up on 10/20. It's the Mountain Counties Water Resource Association. It's an event in Murphy's Wine and Water and Wine? Water, Wine and another W.
Yeah.
So, coming up on, on October 20th. And we are a member of that association, so we've done some additional sponsoring to help promote that, that group of water networking. We, we did consider and discuss authorization for our general manager at UWPA to enter into a mutual aid agreement for emergency situations. So, that would be mutual aid between UPUD and us and Twomey County Water Association, CCWD, in the event that there needs to be shared efforts, shared employees, shared equipment, mostly for emergency stuff. So, if you have it all in place, then it's easier to get reimbursed for the FEMA, it would be FEMA at that time or whatever. If you have a, something in place, a mechanism in place, you can get refunded. And then we had discussions about our inspections and our reports and ongoing things for our perp licensing. I did attend after that meeting. I made it to a portion of the candidates' night, learned a bunch of stuff. Did not know that Brathart has a competitive gaming, what was that called? It was so weird. I didn't know. It's a sport.
E-sport.
Yeah, like e-sport. Yeah, heard about that. Super interesting. And then... I think that's it. Here we are. That's it. That brought me to today.
Oh, hi. Let's see, I had COVID at our last meeting, so I came in via video. That was super fun. Then I flew to Orlando and I got to Hunter Down during Hurricane, yeah, Ian.
Were you there?
I was there, yeah. Flew home on Saturday because that's the soonest I could get home. So, I did attend the, what was it, the, I didn't do a lot because there was a lot going on for me. But I went to the, to the Watershed Advisory Committee Workshop the day after our council meeting, the last council meeting. And we talked a lot about how to spend some funding that they got. It's not much funding. I think it was like $250,000. And just, we're included in that and it's about putting maybe water stations in for clean water for emergency services, but also for low income who don't have clean water, people whose wells are, have gone dry, wells who are compromised, aren't giving you clean water, things like that. So, there was, they're gonna look into, and apparently we have a water station here in Calabres County, which I was not aware of.
CCWD does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so...
Oh, CCWD has multiple...
Yeah, it's a little, it's got solar. So, they talked about the cost of, I think it was like $70,000 or something that put that in. So, they, we're talking about doing that over in Sonora and then doing some money set aside for well testing and then money set aside for helping someone to have to dig a deeper well. So, anyway, that's just, how do we divvy up that money fairly, things like that. So, it was a really interesting workshop, actually. And so, that's, that's all I have.
Jen covered all of UWPA. So, I had to do historical society little speech thing for Calabres telephone in comprehensive. It is a pretty interesting group. I figured that it wouldn't, there was a lot of...
Oh, it's, it's a great thing.
It is a packed house and supposedly it wasn't...
There was, they said that one wasn't...
That one wasn't...
The historic. They wanted to do one at the museum and to go to the bottom of the Catholic church and have their thing and then do it in the museum. And they said like, I've heard people usually show...
And Jasper caters it and she sends only about a hundred and twenty. It was a really interesting evening. We have UWPA, we have COG, we have CTA.
Tomorrow for it as well, and then I've got a museum meeting on Thursday.
I have one more thing. So, the Central Sierra Economic Development District will be attending the 18th meeting here and they have a presentation to give to council. We were talking about a joint meeting for the board and city council and they, they're doing cover one. So, they're doing one for the city council and one for our supervisors. So, I will be putting, I sent the presentation deck that were, I sent to Rose, so she'll have that included. And then they also provided a flyer that we can post to our Facebook or website or whatever to get more public involvement. So, I'll be posting that as well.
And I will be jemisoning with the water wine. There's some pretty big people that are coming for the water and I will be attending a walk through the following day after that.
Yeah, actually, October 20th, Greg. At Murphy's on October 20th.
Yeah, it's the 21st, I think we're gonna walk.
I haven't seen any outreach on that yet. Have they sent anything?
Joel sent on the walk or on the tour?
Facebook on that.
Yeah, I don't, I just found out about it. We just sponsored it. It's happening.
And the only thing I saw was what I sent you. It just came yesterday or today to our...
Yeah, I'll, Joel sent it to us.
I won't be at the next council meeting.
All right, I forget anything else? Ladies over at the table there, you guys all good? Calendar, Rose, I'm sure you've already sent it out.
So, actually Rebecca sent you guys out another email regarding how to access it. And I have added on for 2023, the mayor and new council meetings for when we get there because we do want you guys all to attend. So, that's why I put it in there so you guys are aware when it is and you can make time to attend.
Can you add that the foundation, museum foundation meetings are the first Thursday at 10 o'clock?
First Thursday, thank you.
And I didn't get that email, so I need to sidebar with you after this about my calendar. It's not working.
Do you get email from me?
I have never gotten an email about a calendar. But I also don't, I keep getting smart sheet wants me to pay them. It's like I'm not paying you.
Yeah, I don't have one.
So, I don't, the calendar thing doesn't work for me in its current status.
Okay, I'm 12, so I have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, anybody opposed, same sign? We are adjourned.